Dear Lord, thank you for all who gathered here this evening to discuss the city's business. Please let us all have the best interest of the city at heart and its residents. Let us have a great evening and a great weekend coming up. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Call to order, the council meeting of January 27th, 2022. Chris, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
Sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nancy?
Jim Adams?
Here.
Melissa Choate?
Here.
Chris Foster?
Here.
Rebecca Prince?
Here.
Louis Short?
Here.
Ally Sugg?
Here.
Lane Tubbs?
Here.
Sharon Williams?
Here.
Let the record show, we have a quorum. Okay, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes of December 16th, 2021.
I have a correction, though.
Okay.
On the December 16th one?
Mm-hmm.
Under new business? The third paragraph down?
Yes.
The seconded, there's no name on...
I'll fix it. All right, if I can remember what it is, I will put it in there. I apologize.
That's all.
I'll second the motion to approve that.
Any discussion? Nancy?
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, on the minutes for this special council meeting, January 18th, 2022, I'll need a motion to approve those, but I also have a change. The second paragraph from the bottom says that Jason Robitaille requested that we appoint Salt Engineering Firm to act as C-MAR. They're actually not going to act as the C-MAR. They're going to put out the C-MAR for the community center improvement bonds. So I just want to take that out for it to say that we appoint Salt Engineering for the community center improvement bonds.
Isn't that what it does?
Oh, there it is. Spam, of course.
Sorry, sorry, Casey.
You're fine.
I make a motion to accept those minutes with that change.
Thank you.
Second that.
Okay. Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, I need a motion to approve the payments journal dated December 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy?
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, I need a motion to approve the street fund financial statements, sanitation fund financial statements, general fund, community center, O-N-M, and miscellaneous funds dated December 31st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy?
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. You have your supervisor reports in your packets. Do you have any questions for them? The ones that are here. Okay, great. How are these new mics working out back there?
Fantastic.
Woo, all right. All right, we got a lot of new business tonight. The State of the City address. This is my first State of the City address, and it is my distinct privilege to serve as your mayor. I feel a great optimism about my first year ahead. I would like to thank the city employees. They continue to impress and push forward with dedication and amazing teamwork for our city. I would also like to extend a thank you to Jimmy Clark for his service to our community. To review 2021, it was challenging for everybody. But in spite of the challenges, the city of Heber Springs saw sales tax revenue increase along with the passing of the 2021 bond improvements. Now, looking at 2022, we have many projects ongoing with the bond improvements, such as the trails, community center beautifications, and drainage. You'll start seeing these projects take shape. We're looking forward to new business opportunities and the expansion of two new local manufacturing facilities. It's a great big to-do list, and we're excited to get started. I look forward to working with the city council to move forward in the coming months. The city is like a great big family. We're a group of individuals making up the story of Heber Springs. We all depend on each other to keep the wheels turning. The state of the city is strong and our future is bright. In closing, I want to thank all the local businesses and the residents of Heber Springs. It is an honor to serve our community. Looking forward to 2022. Now, let's get to it. Procedure of council meetings 2022. A resolution. Do you all want to keep it the same? Do we want to change anything? Yes, we're going to keep it the same. So I just need a motion for the resolution for the procedure of council meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Nancy?
The resolution number will be 2022-01.
01?
Do we read the resolution?
We can. If we want, I don't know. I mean, it's... Huh? We have it in the past?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, I need a motion to accept the legislative audit for 2019 and 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Nancy?
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, I need a motion to contract with the Humane Society for the year 2022.
No changes, nothing like that.
No changes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Nancy?
Casey Griffin. Oh, sorry, I've got the wrong names I have. Let's go with Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, the contract with the disabled veterans for 2022. I need a motion for the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Any discussion?
Same as last year?
Yes. A lot of these are just...
Carried forward.
Contracts that we have to do every year. Ms. Nancy, when you're ready.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. A motion to appoint Stan Lee as chairman on advertising and promotion committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Nancy?
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Motion carried. Business with the mayor and Stephen Griffin ordinance so that we can work in the same place. I believe it's the same as the last one we had.
We do need to read the ordinance.
Yep.
I'll read it.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs Police Department to employ the spouse of a member of city council...
That needs to change.
Member of mayor.
Yep, city of Heber... Mayor of the city of Heber Springs prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas as follows. Stephen Griffin, a full-time employee of the Heber Springs Police Department, is married to Mayor Casey Griffin. In section two, in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated section 1442-107B1, the city council hereby authorizes the Heber Springs Police Department to employ Stephen Griffin despite any direct or indirect benefit Mayor Casey Griffin may derive from said employment. Section three, the authority granted herein shall be limited in scope and time to the continued full-time employment of Stephen Griffin with the Heber Springs Police Department.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance?
Adopt.
Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any discussion? Ms. Nancy, what ordinance number will this be?
2022-01.
01?
Lane Tubbs?
What's the difference in the... The ord... It's resolution number on either one. Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you all. Next, we have the city to do business with Ally Sugg and Red River Radio.
I'll read it.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with Red River Radio Incorporated, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas as follows. Section one, Red River Radio Incorporated is the business in which council member Ally King Sugg holds an executive or managerial office and ownership interest. Section two, in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated section 1442-107B1, the city council hereby authorizes the mayor to contract with Red River Radio Incorporated despite any indirect benefit council member Ally Sugg... Ally King Sugg may derive from said businesses. Section three, the authority granted herein to the mayor to conduct business with Red River Radio Incorporated shall be limited in scope, time, and cost to the purchase of radio airtime related to advertising and promoting of community events in the city of Heber Springs.
I move that we approve the ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Nancy?
That is 2022-02.
Okay.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Upstain.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is for sanitation, and we are going to table that. We need to collect a little bit more data before we move forward. So Scott asked that we table it till next month. Okay, on to Jay. Private club ordinance for Finney's. The ABC board wanted them to drop bar and grill, so it's just going to be called Finney's.
We need to read this one?
Yeah.
This says 2021. Is it... Should it be 2022-03? Yes, 03. An amended ordinance approving the private club permit application for Finney's and allowing for the application of the required permits from the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division per Arkansas Code annotated section 39222 is amended. Whereas Finney's has applied for a private club permit as required under chapter 42405 of the Heber Springs City Code for Ordinance Number 1804 and Arkansas Code annotated section 39222. And whereas the application is limited and specific to Finney's and whereas Finney's has provided all the information required in the permit application process and whereas the city council for the city of Heber Springs hereby approves the application for permit for the proposed location to operate a private club within the city council limits of Heber Springs and whereas this approval does not authorize the operation of a private club within the city of Heber Springs, but does function as an authorization to apply for a private club permit through the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division per Arkansas Code annotated section 39222. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, section one, that the application for private club permit is hereby approved for and specific to Finney's located at 3450 Highway 25B, Heber Springs, Arkansas, 72543. Section two, that no private club operation shall begin unless and until the permit to operate a private club is issued by the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Division. Section three, that the approval and permit are subject to suspension or revocation by the city in the event Finney's violates Heber Springs City Code or state law. There is one little typographical error there in the...
With the G?
Yes, in the fourth whereas paragraph with the... Within shouldn't have a G in it.
I circled it. I need a motion to approve said ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Nancy?
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have a contract with the Sugar Love Heritage Council. We pay them $2,500 every year.
This is the same contract as last year, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the contract.
Second.
With the change of the county to...
To the city.
Section three.
Who seconded it? Who seconded it?
Any discussion? Ms. Nancy, when you're ready.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have the contract lease agreement with Young Men's Business Club, Brannaville Falls.
Aging. Aging.
Oh, I skipped ahead. Contract with Cleveland County Aging.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Nancy?
For us newbies, these are all the same, right?
They are.
And this is the contract that we pay them $25,000 for benefits to the seniors in our communities.
Yeah, that's for a year. I think we pay it... Do we pay it quarterly? Ms. Nancy?
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, the contract lease agreement with Young Men's Business Club for Brannaville Falls.
So, young men's business, they own...
Own Brannaville Falls?
Okay.
It's monitoring.
We lease it for a dollar a year, I think, to use it as a city park.
This is... This is just 500.
500.
Yeah.
We have to spend a minimum on all that stuff. Yeah.
You have to maintain and restore.
Then we just got to giving them some money for some signs, too. 15 hundred. Is this the same contract?
It is.
Yeah.
I'm making a move. We approve it.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Nancy?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have a resolution for dark threat and the tax back program. We have Ms. Amy and Mr. Jared here to present. You guys want to talk about it a little bit?
Yeah, we can. It's up to y'all in regards to answer questions.
Can you come up to the mic?
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks, Jared. No problem.
My name's Jared Wickliff. I am a deployed for the state agency, Arkansas Economic Development Commission. I have you with me, Amy Williams. We're here today after we've been working with Dark Threat Fabrication and we have made a reference here, one of the co-owners, and he can... If you have any questions specifically about the company, but Amy and I, we work with the... Or I specifically work with business development, and we report to Secretary Mike Preston and the Department of Commerce. And our role is really to work with companies who are looking to come to Arkansas. But one of the really rewarding things that we get to do is we get to work with existing companies in our communities that are wanting to expand. And that's kind of what Dark Threat Fabrication is going to be doing, is looking to expand here in Heber Springs. And one of the statutory incentives within the state law is that we have a tax back program. And this is a refund of sales and use tax for state and local for the construction process. So whether that be for an expanding building or for a new addition, things like that. So we kind of come for you today for support for one of a local company who's going to be doing some great work, expanding in regards to economic development and bringing some high-quality, high-wage jobs to the community. So, and I'm open to any questions and can elaborate. Again, this is one that requires not just state support, but also local support at the county and the city. So again, this is just going to be on sales and use tax used during the construction process. So again, we come here today to ask for the support for this local business.
You have any questions? I think it's awesome. Yes, thanks, Jared.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so now we just need a motion for the... Well, I guess we need to read the resolution.
Okay. What will this... 02, 2022-02? Resolution of the City Council of Heber Springs certifying local government endorsement of Dark Threat Fabrications LLC to participate in the tax back program as authorized by section 1542706D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003. Whereas in order to be considered for participation in the tax back program, the local government must endorse a business to participate in the tax back program. And whereas the local government must authorize the refund of local sales and use taxes as provided in the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003. And whereas said endorsement must be made on specific form available from the Arkansas Economic Development Commission and whereas Dark Threat Fabrication LLC located at 2200 Wilbon Road, Heber Springs, Arkansas, 72543, has sought to participate in the program and more specifically has requested benefits accruing from the construction of the specific facility. And whereas Dark Threat Fabrication LLC located has agreed to furnish the local government as necessary... All necessary information for compliance. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of Heber Springs, Arkansas, that Dark Threat Fabrication LLC located be endorsed by the City Council of Heber Springs, Arkansas for benefits from the sales and use tax refunds as provided by section 1542706D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003. The Department of Finance and Administration is authorized to refund local sales and use taxes to Dark Threat Fabrication LLC. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
We accept the resolution.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
This just during construction time?
Correct. It's just during the construction time and...
For the materials, right?
For the materials used and based on material availability. Again, this is just going to be what would be purchased locally in the city in regards to that refund. I don't know necessarily the strategic plan for the construction on if those materials would be purchased here locally. But again, we have to have local support for overall state refund as well. So, and it's not a loss to revenue, our expected revenue. Against this expansion project and things like that, so yes.
How will expanding your business, how's it going to help you? Are you going to create more jobs or get to do more things?
Absolutely, absolutely. So as part of this program, we're slated to add approximately 75 jobs over the next five years. And so that's pretty aggressive, but we do have a pretty good opportunity, you know, in our business and the way that we're doing our marketing. And some of the new equipment that we have already on its way to our facility is going to open a lot of doors for us.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you for your effort, Jared.
What all do you do at...
So mainly, we're a precision sheet metal fabrication shop. So we laser cut, we form, we powder coat, weld, assemble, and we ship. We do a lot of job shop work. For example, we make components for Amazon facilities, FedEx facilities where they're sorting packages and moving things around. So some very small, what I would call high-volume production.
That's great. We're excited to have you here and look forward to see what you get to do next.
Thanks.
Do you have any more questions? Okay, Ms. Nancy?
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have some write-offs for the sanitation department. I guess they've tried and tried to collect on this, and they just are not having any luck. The total's eight hundred and fifty-two dollars from four different businesses. We can try to write them off, try to keep collecting, or we can write them off. I don't know. Couple of businesses I don't even know, so.
Usually by the time it gets to this point, they've been trying for many, many months.
Six, 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 six months on there.
We're just wasting.
Time and energy.
And, well, and postage even, I mean.
Yeah.
So I move that we write off these balances, excuse me, owing by the Heber Springs Mail Center and Emporium, Incredible Kids Heber, Enman Auto Sales, and James Beardsley, Beardsley Plumbing.
Are any of these businesses still in business? Don't look like it.
I don't think they are.
Not going to get much of it.
Two of them, I don't know. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Nancy? Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choak?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have dumpsters that we need to remove from fixed assets. These dumpsters have been put through the wringer. They've been welded too many times, and it's time to scrap them.
It's time to scrap.
That's a plus. It's a plus. So I just need a motion to.
How many of them?
There's sixteen.
Can we do them all at once? I make a motion that we scrap them.
Can I get a second?
Do we need to reach these serial numbers separately, or?
If you want to just make one motion, I will put them all in the motion. I will list them all off in this.
I make a move that, or motion to remove the sixteen dumpsters as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Nancy? Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Melissa Choak?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we're going to add on a resolution for the state age street program. We just received two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to pay five streets. Super excited. So I just need a motion to accept that resolution.
Twenty twenty-two oh three.
Twenty twenty-two oh three.
Make a motion, we accept the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
What streets are they?
Trailwood, North Park, McCurry. Pine. And there's one more I can't remember. I think it was a shorter one.
Where's McCurry?
It's out west. It's like off of Harrison. Did we bundle that already?
Nope.
Okay. Ms. Nancy, when you're ready. Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choak?
Yes.
Motion carried. And we flew through that way faster than I ever thought.